Okay, we'll call this December ninth, meeting of city council to order at seven p.m. Um, please stand up and pledge allegiance.
To the right there.
To flag the United States of America, and to the Republic where we stand, on a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Does that take over if you give Bill King first?
Yes. Father, we pray for peace in our world this Christmas. Let the message of Christ birth bring reconciliation and hope to every nation. Blessed are the peacemakers, for they will be all children of God. Amen.
Amen. Put call and roll, please.
Mr. Lawson, Mr. Ruth, Mr. Goodman?
Here.
Mr. Sonic?
Here.
Mr. Dumpy?
Here.
Mr. Flowers?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Here.
Uh, motion to excuse, excuse Mr. Ruth and Mr. Lawson.
Sub move. Second.
Mr. Goodman?
Yes.
Mr. Sonic?
Yes.
Mr. Dumpy?
Yes.
Mr. Flowers?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Okay, minutes from the last meeting, did everyone receive them? And are there any corrections? Okay, motion to accept those minutes. Sub move. Second.
Mr. Sonic?
Yes.
Mr. Dumpy?
Yes.
Mr. Flowers?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Goodman?
Yes.
Citizens' comments, would anyone like to make a comment? Please step up to the podium. You have three minutes.
You know, the only way I hear things that's going on is through chatter. You're gonna have a spook's here chatter about everything. And so I've been hearing chatter again about another trip to the courts. And Supreme Court, I guess, also be a fourth time they did. Anyways, I brought to people, this is exactly what we voted on in November. Very simple. Four and a half lines, very simple. That's it. So I don't know what's going on, but another trip to the court. It's money for one thing, but maybe they'll be able to tell you, can they see me on there?
No.
Oh, good. Maybe they'll be able to tell you tonight, you know, what it's all about. I don't know. Because I can't stay there long. But anyways, this is what we voted on. This is the petition that was on top of the signatures that the people signed. We voted to change governments. That's a done deal. So what it's about, the chatter, I'll have somebody else fill me in about what's happened after I leave. But anyways, very simple. People wanted a change. They voted on it. Court said voted on it. We voted on it. So what's happening now, I don't know. I just don't know. But anyways, maybe we'll be enlightened. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, whether or not the council will appeal to the Supreme Court is not my decision. I don't know what the council will say.
It's a council's decision.
I have to follow their instructions on whether or not to appeal.
That's good enough.
Um, here's the way the courts rule. Counsel has full authority to just repeal issue twenty-three.
Many times.
Okay, excuse me. We're, allow Mr. Rowe to speak, please.
The only way to ensure that counsel can't do that is to actually take it to the Supreme Court. Because the Supreme Court could say, oh, well, so recall what happened. The trial court issued orders. And then when it was appealed to the appellate court, the appellate court actually corrected one mistake that the trial court had made. But the problem with the, the way the Court of Appeals rule is to leave it in the hands of counsel whether to repeal issue twenty-three. I don't think that's the correct answer. But the Supreme Court could step in and say, no, counsel doesn't have that authority. There's a lot of other things that the Supreme Court could say. But in terms of giving the voters certainty, that's something that needs to have certainty. And unfortunately, only the Supreme Court at this point can give that certainty. I've told the Judiciary Committee meeting, I don't think the Supreme Court will take this case. I think the Supreme Court's likely to say the election's over. But if they do take the case, that would be the one question that they would give clarity on. I, I, I hope that, I hope that's helpful.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other citizens' comments? Okay. Um.
Yeah, Jim. Um, yes, Mr. President, we have a member here that, a gentleman that's interested in being part of the rec board, and I would like to nominate him to be part of the rec board and have him sworn in if possible. If he wants to introduce himself himself.
Sure.
A little bit about himself, he may.
Go ahead, you're up there. I'm Stacy. Uh, Reeve Courtney, um, former Ray's Nelsonville, um, above Pine Grove. One time, I went back here about a year ago and was approached by a member of Parks and Rec Board about joining and helping out. Were you guys all happy?
I'm like, motion to a panel?
Sounds like it.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, put call and roll, please.
Mr. Sonic? Absolutely. Mr. Dumpy?
Definitely.
Mr. Flowers?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes. Yes, welcome aboard.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, business and organizational comments. Well, uh, committee discussions, did any committees mean sensible as counsel moved?
Uh, the police and fire met, uh, last Monday. And it was a short and sweet meeting because there was just, uh, Mr. Lawson and myself there, and, uh, we discussed the code enforcement and, um, if we could have somebody else be hired to assist our code enforcement guy right now, Bill Rigger. And the question came up as to if we could afford to hire another one. So that question would be put to you, Mr. uh, Mr. Satin. If, if we could, uh, afford to put another person on the supplement, because I, my understanding is Mr. Rigger wants to be a part-time person. And now that's my understanding, that's what I was told by, I think, uh, our acting city manager, Mr. Talbot. And so I would put, can I put that question to you now? Will you feel comfortable talking about it?
Sure, yeah. The, uh, the short answer is that the budget in two thousand twenty-five is scheduled slated for deficit in the general fund. And there is no expansion in that budget for code enforcement. So in the way council has set funds aside in twenty-five, there's, there's no funds set aside for additional hours.
But I guess my question would be, and this was brought up also, that the rent, the rental property, fees were supposed to offset the code enforcement person. Now, I didn't know that, but that was brought up at this, at our police and fire meeting. Is that, does that sound right?
They do go to the same place, yeah.
So they don't offset, we don't make enough to offset the?
Oh goodness, our, um, so the full-time person in code, um, I mean, even a forty thousand dollar salary could be up to seventy-five with health insurance. Um, and our rental fees bring in maybe twenty, I think it's like twenty-five, twenty-six thousand.
Yeah.
It's probably less than that because we have less rentals now.
I was gonna say, I think it's slid down where it's the last seven.
Maybe twenty-two thousand.
So in other words, it doesn't really cover one person's cost, so one and a half, if that makes sense. Because one and a half could be up to, if you, if you assume a part-time person works around thirty-two hours a week, you'd be talking around a hundred five thousand between the two. So you would need a serious.
So is that what, Mr. Rigger, is that what code enforcement, Rigger is talking about, going to thirty-two hours a week? Or is he wanting to like cut down to half of that? I honestly don't know.
I don't know his full intent for the number, total number of hours he was working.
I'm, I'm sorry?
I don't know the full number, like the breakdown of the total number of hours he would be comfortable.
Maybe we ought, maybe we ought to look into that and then see the offset, you know? I mean, because I think, you know, I wrote, I wrote around the city today and I won't belabor this subject because it's not me, but I wrote around the city today and definitely, um, it definitely, we need somebody to do some door knocking and tell them we gotta straighten this stuff up. So that's all we got.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we had a judiciary committee meeting after that, given belief at eight, and just discussed about bringing this to the uh, Supreme Court for clarity on the situation, not trying to take anybody's vote away or anything like that. You know, to get clarity on the situation of what direction we head and to find out where we're at. Because there's no, there's, number one, there's no plan right now for anything.
For transition.
For transition, at all.
That's right.
There's nothing. So let's let the, if the Supreme Court rules on it, great. And we'll abide by their decision, but no one's trying to take anybody's vote away, at all. So, there we go. That's it, basically.
Mr. President, I'll, I'll motion that we go ahead and ask Mr. Rowe to take our, that motion to the Supreme Court for their final answer.
Second.
Any counsel discussion?
Uh, yeah, I, I, I have a discussion.
Yes, Mr. Farrow.
I, I just think this is, uh, I really think it's a slap in the face to the citizens. I really do. And I feel like if we keep going at this, when two-thirds of the votes were for to the, the change in charter to statutory, I really feel that, that the citizens are, have spoken. I mean, I, I, I think if you keep, I think what was said was they got duped. And I don't, I don't think they got duped. I think they understood what they were doing. So.
I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt you.
Yeah.
But did you hear them explain that technically we can repeal the decision?
Yep.
And at this time, we have no direction as to how the government is going to make the change of it. That's what we are asking the Supreme Court to tell us. That's the only thing. We're not duping anybody.
I didn't use the word dupe. It was used, it was used in council.
Okay, sir.
I was, I was afraid, huh?
Who said that?
One of our councilmen said it.
Okay.
But, but
but now that it's been explained a little bit better from Jonathan, do you understand why we're doing that?
No.
Okay.
No, I don't. I don't, I don't, it, it's, it's pretty much said that if you got the form of government that we had prior to the charter, that was a mayor or your form of government. From mayor down to the councilman. I mean, so what's to set up?
Do you, do you know how many towns it went back from a charter form of government?
None, okay, we understand that. But what's to set up?
Well, all kinds of things.
If I may, just to, okay, to, to answer, that's a very good question from Mr. Farrow. So, um, one, well, let me just use a specific example. One of the things that needs to be done between now and when the new council and the new mayor takes office is providing for those new offices. So like, providing for the office of an elected mayor, which there is none right now. And the challenge is the charter gives no authority to counsel to provide for an elected mayor. Including setting the salary for the elected mayor. Which means when the elected mayor is sworn in, his or her salary will be zero by law.
But isn't that from November, the, whatever the date is in November, the election will be held. From that point until January the first, isn't that up to those sworn-in people to decide that?
Per the language of issue twenty-three, they don't take office until January the first.
So it has to be decided before then? Well, I don't think it's up to this, are you saying is this council is the ones that should decide what they're gonna have as far as pay?
No, I don't think this council has authority to do that. And the problem is because of that, um, when a new mayor is sworn in into office on January first, twenty twenty-six, he or she will have to serve for free for four years. Because under the statute, you can't change the salary midterm.
Oh, so that's what you're gonna ask the Supreme Court for, not to repeal the, the vote, but to, to tell us how to set the government up?
Well, they probably can't give that answer in this case. In this case, the likely issue that they would decide, again, if they, and I, I'm very skeptical if they're either taking case. But if they do, it will just be to answer the question whether counsel has authority to repeal issue twenty-three or not. The question of how to set up a mayor's salary is not something that they will address in this case. And so.
So, so, but Mr. Rowe, what, what I just heard you say, and I do have my hearing in, yeah. What you, what I heard you say was the Supreme Court would decide if we have the right to, uh, to, uh, appeal or repeal issue twenty-three. Right?
Correct, because the way the Court of Appeals decided the case necessarily means counsel can't do that.
So, so that would be we could do away with it. Counsel could.
Or amend it.
Well, counsel could get away with, could get rid of it today without going to the Supreme Court.
You mean, we could literally void everybody's vote?
That's correct, correct.
That's why we're setting it to the Supreme Court.
She, here's what happened. The Court of Appeals said the charter provision, uh, procedures and only the charter procedures apply to issue twenty-three, not the constitutional procedures. We have to follow that ruling, but the, the charter procedure, section ten point oh six A of the charter says, anything that's voted on by the people under charter procedures is subject to repeal by counsel. And so I think that was an oversight by the Court of Appeals. And I, I said, all due respect to them, because it was a very difficult decision. They reached what they believed to be the appropriate decision. It's just, there needs to be that clarity, I believe, for the people. Um, that our system of government is set up so that the people and only the people get to decide the form of government. It shouldn't be subject to a veto, effective veto by counsel. But the problem is that's what, where the Court of Appeals left it. And, and again, I'm, I'm not trying to be disrespectful to them, it's just, I don't, that, that's a challenge. And, and again, that's separate from all of them, I mean, here's what I'm planning on doing, because remember, counsel's instructed me to figure out how to implement this. If there's something that counsel doesn't have authority to do, I'm just gonna have to draft the legislation just to put it on the desk of the new council on January first, twenty twenty-six, just so that they, you know, it may be a big stack, but at least then they can make the decision what they think is appropriate. Um, I don't think it's appropriate for the city government just to basically hand a mess over to a new council. I don't think that's an option.
Right.
Um, but if count, if this council doesn't have authority to do something, then it'll fall in the new council. It's just, there's, there's a lot of uncertainty there. And again, like I said at the Judiciary Committee meeting, um, this hasn't been done before. It doesn't mean it can't be done. But it's just, we don't have any roadmap to borrow from somebody else on how to do it.
I guess what I'm uncomfortable with is, is that the, as much as this council has fought to appeal this thing, to leave the decisions like that up to them, seems like, uh, I, I could use the word problematic. The fox in the hen house.
Right.
Situation, you know? Uh, yeah, problematic is a better word than, yeah, but I mean, and that, that's my biggest, uh, my biggest concern is leaving the, uh, this council who opposed this, the authority to decide what they're gonna do.
Yeah.
Yeah, you agree? Yeah.
Well, I don't think this council opposed the, the citizens choosing their own form of government, but I think that this council during our discussions, and you were part of most of those, um, just disagreed with some of the processes that occurred in our own attorney, and Reminger had even tried to assist them in correcting the ballot initiative that actually had, so we wouldn't have those issues coming onto the ballot. And they opted not to take those recommendations. And so it's kind of put us in a tough spot in terms of legalities, right? So I don't think that we've been opposed to anybody, and we've said that publicly. We've not been opposed to anybody choosing their own form of government, but there's a better way to do it, or a proper way to do it legally, and we were just trying to assist in that process.
So why don't we just start assisting in that process right now?
Well, he just told you, we can't assist in that process as counsel. We cannot assist in that process.
As far as the charter goes, he just said we could, right?
There are some things I think this council, the current council that is, has authority to do. I think there are certain other things that you don't have authority to do. Um, but, but, but if, if I may just, uh, in response to, um, Mr. Taylor, I think this is a profoundly difficult decision for the council. That's why I did not even make a recommendation one way or the other. I think it's just a decision that council's going to have to make. And I think each member of council will just have to, you know, refer to his or her conscience on how to do it. And like I said at the Judiciary Committee meeting, I think voting for or against taking the appeal, I have, I have respect for either one, because I, I understand it's a difficult decision. I will say, the city has to abide by the will of the people. The challenge is figuring out how to correctly do that. And, and, and like counsel instructed me, I'm supposed to be advising the council on how to do the transition, so it's just gonna be step by step. The next year, I'm gonna stumble and bumble on implementing issue twenty-three. I might look kind of silly in the papers, but that's, as long as I'm going, falling forward, it's okay to stumble and bumble.
Yes.
As long as we're going forward.
As long as we learn from stumbling and bumbling.
I, I guess as long as I learn, I'll probably be most of the time stumbling and bumbling. But anyway, to the point, I think it's a very difficult decision. I think each member of council just reflecting on your individual oaths of office. Need to.
Well, these were all questions that I, that were asked of me, and I didn't know. I stumbled and bumbled on them, like you said. So, you know, I just wanted to kind of bring them up and see how, uh.
Okay, one other thing, if I may, so, um, we don't know at this point in time what the cost the city will be for this appeal. It could be zero. It could be some minimal cost. It could be tens of thousands of dollars. The reason we don't know this is Reminger has just recently asked the insurance care, the city's insurance carrier to cover the costs, but we haven't heard back from them. Given that we're entering the holiday season, it may be until, not until the new year that we know. Now, the city, the council could always vote now to appeal it, and then in January, when we get let's say, the answer is, oh, it'll be very expensive, counsel could always say, well, let's withdraw the appeal. So that's something to keep in mind, um, as well, but I just wanted to report that to the council.
Anything else, Mr. Farrow?
No, no, I'm good.
Okay. So, for the record, I signed a petition to put this on the ballot.
I did.
And I did it for various reasons, but when the language came out, it was very lacking in what we've been discussing. So I, along with everyone else here, took an oath of office to uphold the Constitution and the Charter. Now, we each have to decide, as Mr. Rowe said, individually, how we deal with that in our own conscience. So I'm, I'm gonna support moving it on. So, any other comments? Put call and roll, please. And the citizens make a comment?
Guess not.
We've, we've had citizen comments.
Well, I know you did, but you normally ask at the end, would you, because we could ask a question. That's okay. You go ahead. I just,
what?
I don't wanna bother you.
You may as well.
All right, I tell you what, we'll go back to comments on this. Please keep it brief. So.
Well, the comment I have would be, you said that we didn't have the money to in the one quarter to pay a mayor. We would start, we have nothing to pay a mayor if we start in next year. We have a gentleman sitting right here who was, uh, you know, our city, you know, mayor, and he sits here and he still, which comes to him, but that's eighty-five thousand dollars of money that he sits here and he's not.
I'd, I'd like to correct that. It's eighty thousand.
Okay, it's eighty, it's eighty thousand.
Correct.
He's sitting here and he's not on this side of the table. So that seems to be, uh, if we don't bring him back, if we have, what we're gonna do, we don't know, would be the money surely to start with our new mayor uh, going forward. That would be one comment I have. My other comment is, I don't like when we open just open book coming. I, I liked what our law reference said. I don't know if it's gonna be zero. I don't know if it's gonna be tens of thousands of dollars. We don't know. We don't seem to have the money right now to go forward next year, uh, for Bill Rigger, to give him the assistance. I would think we wouldn't vote on this until we know what's this gonna cost us? You, you just give it an open book. Is it gonna cost us tens of thousands of dollars? We don't have, or zero. So I think that would be, you know, the citizens, you're right, the citizens of Nelsonville voted to go forward with this. And that means an awful lot. Uh, I would think we would wait or make this decision, see what the actual cost is gonna be. This gentleman truly not gonna work for nothing.
There is a deadline for us to file this.
Well, so that's, that's fine. But if it's, you can make that deadline, but I would think we have to look at, we, we need to know what the, the back out of it, know what the, the bottom cost is gonna be. You're just giving an open checkbook.
Yeah, and as Mr. Rowe said, we can withdraw the appeal to the Supreme Court.
I would truly want to withdraw if it's gonna be tens of thousands of dollars.
That's a decision that we'll make when we have the facts. We don't have them right now.
I understand that.
Okay.
May I address Mr. Brooks?
Sure, yes.
First question. So about the new, it's not an issue about having the money to pay him or not. It's about whether there's law authorizing the mayor's pay. And here's the practical, there are only two possible answers to it. One is either the mayor's initial salary is zero dollars. Or a court would say. or a court would say, we'll just automatically go back to whatever the mayor's salary was in nineteen ninety four, which I believe was somewhere around a few hundred dollars a month, which, um, the prob, the practical problem is the new city auditor may, and we don't know who the new city auditor will be, but
Right.
Hopefully we'll, we'll find out and hopefully the city will ha, elect a very good one. Um, the new city auditor may take the position, I need to err on the safer one, the safer answer, which is the zero dollar salary. And we would need then a judge to come in and say, no, you need to pay him at the nineteen ninety four salary and council can always change that, which would go into effect the second mayor election. I just wanted to be transparent that this is a problem that needs to be worked through.
It'll be a problem for multiple positions, not just the.
It would be, it would sure, it would be true for every single elected position.
Well, that's true. I understand that.
But it's, I'm not saying that problem because I'm saying, oh, we need to get rid of issue twenty three. It's more of just how to implement issue twenty three. And it's just from where I sit, as the city attorney, it's just, we gotta get it done. But it's just.
You, yeah, I mean, you understand what I, I mean, I think I understand, you know, on my side, where I sit as a taxpayer, that we're paying somebody eighty thousand dollars salary.
That's a separate issue.
No, it's not. It's part of this issue as you're gonna go forward and you sit and tell me you're gonna hire somebody and pay them nothing? Zero? How's that go down to the, to the citizens of Nelsonville? I don't, you know.
That person will be paying nothing to be elected, not, not hired.
Well, but you still haven't, you know, there, there's still, that still lays out. That's, that's what I hear from the citizens. There, there's nothing, you can't tell us which way we're going here if we're gonna bring this gentleman back or we're going to fire.
That is a separate issue than what we're discussing.
Yes, it is, and we cannot discuss that.
I'm sorry, Mr. President. We actually have a motion, yeah, second on the board.
So. Any other comments? Put down the roll, please.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Sorry, what's happened, Mr. Duncan?
Mr. Sherman, please. Uh, we're conduct, Mr. Sherman.
No, you're boiling.
Mr. Sherman, Mr. Sherman, order, please. Thank you. So this motion passes. All right. Anything else from the Judiciary Committee? All right. Mr. Sappington, you'd like to give a brief auditor's report?
Yes. Good evening, council, residents, uh, staff, folks at home, guests. Um, I wanted to present quickly because there, at the last meeting, it was stated there would be no second meeting in December, uh, which is when the auditor and treasurer presents reports, uh, which means you wouldn't get, um, the new practice we are, uh, doing, which is the check report. You wouldn't get one until the end of January, which is a long time. So I wanted to present the check reports since the twenty fourth of November. Uh, for your review, questions, thoughts, comments, lashings. Um, it's slightly different than the one that was emailed to you just because Judy came in on her day off today. She didn't need to. I gotta give her kudos. But she wanted to have as much work done for you folks to review as possible, the bolded text are the items she was able to complete today.
Just one question, I'm sorry. Uh, on this, it says six thousand dollars.
Yep.
Is that part of what they're asking or what we're paying in or how's that go?
That is a great question. Which date? Can you tell me which date?
Uh, it says twelve five.
Twelve five. Twelve five. Twelve, twelve, five is a busy day. They keep paving six thousand dollars. That is not, I believe that is, there was patchwork. At the college, um, or out near the roof by the college. Um, extensive, not small little patches, extensive, okay? Uh, in the city. Um, paid for that. I also just wanna say Judy came in on her day off and put that Christmas tree up so that you guys are having a nice. So.
Thank you, Judy.
Thanks to Judy. Any other thoughts?
Yes. This DLZ.
Yes.
Tell me something about him. I, I was under, my understanding was that they are the ones that brought the uh, administrative secretary in. Is that right?
Um.
Other way around. And then rehired her.
Other way, I was gonna say, they hired her, um, usually friendly agencies don't poach from each other, but I think it was a matter of they didn't know she had just got hired here. Um, and they also paid a much better rate.
What did they do for us?
DLZ, uh, they're the engineering firm. So they did the engineering on water projects, sewer projects, uh, the dog park project.
All the big work, all the applications.
Yes.
All the grant writing.
Applications.
All the administration of all those grants.
So there are separate checks because those are for different projects. Um, so the, their invoices are separated by project. Any other questions? If anybody wants to review, they're, uh, on the website and if, um, uh, you haven't been here, this is every check that the city writes. So I ask council to just give a brief overview of every expense the city incurs and then we keep it on the website for, for transparency for folks to go look at.
Any further questions for the auditor?
No. Uh, I'm motion that we accept the check report.
Mr. Flowers?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Miss Sonny?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes. Thank you much. Have a good Christmas.
Thank you too. Thank you.
Uh, department updates.
Chief Oliver? I got those stats from the police department for the month of November. Uh, we had two hundred and eighty five calls per servants. We looked at ninety seven traffic stops, issued fifty one traffic citations, eleven parking citations. Investigated thirteen traffic crashes, made seventeen criminal arrests and twenty warrant arrests.
Are there any specific thing of those traffic crashes that there, there's a one place that's kind of worse than others?
Uh, not particularly. They're pretty well spread out.
Thank you.
I've also got a code update. So last week, Bill nailed down all of the rental registration notices to all the um, property owners that we had on file. So far we've got seventy five kind of, uh, responded and turned those in. So we'll get those processed. So if you're landlords, please send in your rental registrations and get those taken care of. Uh, Bill also processed six different permits and issued three notices of violations and then received two vacant property registration permits.
Are we going forward with mayor's court for next year, for next month?
Uh, currently that's on hold. We don't have anyone to be the mayor for mayor's court or a magistrate in the fight at the moment. Because the training occurs once a year in January. So we'll have to see if the council president or vice president are gonna do that or if we're looking at getting a magistrate. I believe the, the route we're kind of looking more towards is magistrate. That'll keep things more straightforward and
Okay.
simple for everything.
How, how, so what, if everything went right, how soon you think that could be? Is that February, March?
That I don't know. Jonathan, can you reach that?
It could, it could happen as soon as, maybe earlier, fingers crossed.
That, that means, okay, that's been going on for a long time, so you get that role for Bill.
So I have, Chief Oliver, I have a question on your, um, your report. Ninety seven traffic stops. How many of those, um, result in citations and versus warnings? You get that breakdown?
Yeah, there's ninety seven and the next column over fifty one of those were.
Citation, okay. And then on the parking citations, does that include, um, on-street vehicles?
That's almost all on-street vehicles for, um, no registration on the vehicle or I just mean junk, broken down vehicle.
Right. So last month, I believe it was ten. This month it's eleven. So we are addressing the, uh, just parking on the street. All right. Any questions for Chief Oliver?
Well, I, it, that ten, is that this, is that still the ten, but we added one to it or is that?
No, that's from, that was from October. This is November. So each month it's.
But that's not, that's not the ten carryover?
No, nothing carries.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. Next is, uh, city law director's update, Mr. Rowe.
Um, sure. So just a couple of brief, uh, items. Number one, uh, I had recommended to the Judiciary Committee to recommend to council creating an advisory commission on the implementation of issue twenty three. My understanding is the Judiciary Committee, uh, took up that recommendation. They instructed me to prepare legislation for council's consideration tonight. Um, that commission would be, the way I understood I was to, to prepare it is it'll be staffed by six citizens, can't be any member of council. Um, per the charter, appointments to that have to be done by a vote of council. It will require at least uh, well, uh, what is it? Article, um, seven sets forth how the vote of appointments would need to be done. Um, obviously it's the law director's job to advise the city on legal issues, but with this transition, there's gonna be a lot of non-legal issues, like for example, I know we, we spent some time talking about the mayor's salary, but suppose we could find a solution, well, what salary should the mayor's salary be set at? That's not really something I can say. The advisory commission would advise council what would be an appropriate uh, number. Um, so I just wanted to, to, to report that. The other thing is, um, I know one of the uh, issues or, uh, um, legislation is my contract for next year. I have already advised council, my last day of service will be December thirty first, twenty twenty five. I'm not eligible to be the law director under the statutory form of government because I'm not, I don't reside in the city of Nelsonville. Um, so what I'm anticipating is after November's election next year, whoever the mayor elect is, whoever the city law director elect is, I'll need to be devoting time to facilitate the transition with them. So I've already, um, reported that to council just so that we can kind of get the, the planning, uh, done ahead of time, knowing that, um, November, December, next month, or sorry, next year, a considerable amount of time would be devoted to, um, that transition and I anticipate that will take a, a considerable amount of time again because it's my duty to ensure that there's a seamless transition, um, as possible.
Any questions for Mr. Rowe? I have a couple. So the budget for twenty six, the current council will set the budget for twenty six.
That question, the answer is not known. Well, I shouldn't say the problem, the, the, think of it this way, switching forms of government is a different transition than transitioning people. So if, like, if we're thinking on the national scale, like the transition from Biden to Trump, that's just same government. It's just new people filling the same seats. Transitioning the form of government is a, is a different problem to tackle. Again, I shouldn't say problem. I'm just same problem. I'm thinking like in, uh, high school math, you know, like a teacher giving you problems. Um, it, even though you could have the same offices, well, there are some differences, like for example, I believe pre-charter, the city had a combined service and safety department, just like Athens does, a service safety director. Right now under the charter, they're split into two departments. So the city manager is the head of the safety department. The service director is head of the service department. Those will be combined, um, under the statutory form. I believe that's pretty clear from the language of issue twenty three. Um, but because it's changing a form of government, just because this council passed a budget wouldn't necessarily mean it would apply because it's a different form of government. I mean, I think council should do it, but then the new council will have to ask the question, one, they'll have to ask, is, is this a valid budget?
Right.
And of course, the problem is, as, as we all know, January of, 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 of every year is a time when the state and county auditors are demanding, hey, our budget's set. And if not, you can run into some, it's just, um, January, the first week of January twenty twenty six may be a very busy week for the new council.
So I'm gonna ask a question and we've been accused of fear mongering during this whole issue. We can assure the employees that they'll be paid on January first.
No.
We cannot assure that.
Oh.
Okay. So I am not fear mongering. I'm just asking the question.
Um, I think the city has a duty to pay its employees for services rendered to the city. I, I don't mean this tongue in cheek, but maybe the best solution is the new council meets first thing in the morning, January first, twenty twenty six, to vote all that. So it's not a problem. If they don't do it, there will be a gap of time. I, the way, so I was rereading recently the charter and as we recall, the charter had article twelve, which was the transition from statutory form to the charter. It explicitly said, there's a, I forget the section number, but it had a whole paragraph on dealing with the employees. So that's why adopting the charter, there wasn't a problem with the employees. But the language in reverse is missing this time around. And, and I'm, I'm not try, I am not interested in pointing fingers or blaming. I'm that's not, I have zero interest. The only question I have is what do voters do and how do we go about?
That transition period between the end of the election in November and the first of January, is that transition, would that be like a clear amount every time I start? Would that be like, um, the Trump cabinet being selected prior to going into?
Yeah, so that's why.
So we could, they could make decisions like that without it going into effect until January the first. Have that set up to go in, right?
I think that, I think there are a, a, a lot of things, this, the current council, what they could do is, well, let me use, um, title thirty one, the rental inspection code, which council recently adopted. Um, the way that's written right now, the city manager is authorized to enforce. I think the current council would need to go back and amend it just to say, effective January first, twenty twenty six, the mayor enforces this.
Yeah.
Um, and so obviously that wouldn't get, kick in until then. And then, of course, the new council could always make adjustments, um, to that, to that ordinance. It's, we, it would just be my job again, when there's a new elected mayor and a new elected law director to facilitate the transit, you know, like I have a bunch of files that I would have to go through to, to give.
Isn't there a template for this? Isn't there some kind of a template set up to where you can go back to, um, uh, or to transition back into to lead you on the transition period?
Unfortunately, I haven't been able to locate. I would really like.
Well, I mean, if you're, if you're gonna set up a new government, anywhere, there has to be some kind of, of, of template telling those people how to set up the government, right?
So what, one of the challenges, maybe that's a better word than problem, one of the challenges that we have is yes, there are. So the, the, um, the statute, for example, has a whole host of kind of, here's how a village transitions into a city. Because cities have different authorities than, than villages under the statute. Um, that is the template most closely related to us, because what we're doing is, we're here under the charter. And we're, issue twenty-three says here under the statute. And so we know where we are, we know where we're supposed to be, I guess. It's just how to get there, is it just a straight line, is it kind of a curve, is it kind of like, you know? So our best guidance is the statute for changing from a village to a city, but that doesn't quite match because Nelson was already a city. So it's kind of going back to what I was saying, kind of fumbling and bumbling, as long as we're going forward. Um, I think that's, that's what we'll have to do. And I, I, I guess, I guess we're kind of writing the template, so, so maybe, maybe if, if other cities in the state follow suit, then, then they can call us and we can.
Council President.
Yes, sir.
I would like to make a request to, um, to our council. When, when we speak, can we, um, do away with facial expressions and, um, gestures? I get a lot of smiling and nodding and shaking heads. I was just wondering if there's any way we could, uh, we could maybe try to be a little more professional. Hello?
That seems like a very odd question or request, um, I'm not sure how to respond to that.
I think, Mr. President, he's asking that we follow a code of conduct in which he did not support initially. And now he's asking us to.
Doesn't matter whether I supported it or not initially. Oh, I'm just saying it now as courtesy.
That's, goes back to the definition of compromise. We agree, we agree with, you know, we would agree with it, it's compromise, unless it doesn't work. So there you go.
Okay, well, that seems rather, okay, moving on. I have another question. Um, there's been a lot of talk about the ordinances and resolutions that have been passed under the charter form of government. And again, when it's brought up, could you explain how that process?
Sure.
What it would look like?
So the, for the last, the, the ordinances for the last thirty years have contemplated that the city manager has ultimate enforcement power. Of course, transition to the statutory form, there is no city manager, it's the mayor. Um, all of those ordinances will need to be updated to include the mayor having ultimate enforcement authority or the service safety director, one of the, just depending on how, how our legislation's, um, contemplated. Um, between now and January first, twenty-twenty-six, I, my recommendation would be that those updates need to be made just to facilitate the smooth transition. Um, at, at, at first, I thought that was going to be a pretty tall order. I think, I still think it will be, but it'll be less than I was initially afraid of. Partly because, actually, the, um, the outfit that produces the code of ordinances for the city, um, actually, I was reviewing it, actually already, I think this was actually an accident, but finally we have kind of an accident in our favor, so to speak. Um, they've actually already implemented some of the language that reflects a, and refers to an elected mayor. Um, I think once there is an elected mayor, that, it's American Legal Publishing will just need to be notified. And they can actually do most of the update, and they would update the code, they would basically delete city manager, replace it with mayor, and then just prove, I mean, it's a giant book, but they would present it to council. That would be, um, that would probably cover a substantial portion, but it wouldn't necessarily cover all of it because.
Yeah, so, so then, so if that's the case, then that stuff could be updated, and it's like a recodification, we could just like re?
As part of the recodification procedure, so, and, and council's already familiar with that process, so it's, I think if. Um, I think if council combines it with the recodification, just to, to kill two birds with one stone at once, rather than voting and repoting, that would probably cover most of it, but I don't think it would cover all of it. So there would still be some individual items of legislation that would just need to be updated. Again, the update would just be effective January first, twenty-twenty-six. The mayor would have, it just, it would take some time to go through and identify those individual items of legislation. Um, it would need to be done, it just would take a considerable amount.
Yeah, and so just a number, if we're talking a hundred ordinances and resolutions a year, for thirty years, we're looking at approximately three thousand pieces of legislation.
Right, now, not all of them would need to be changed, because some of those will be, like, for example, there's the annual staffing ordinance that, so one, oh, knocked out thirty of, of them, because there would only be one staffing ordinance, which would still have to be done. Um, the change there would have to be, I think, did.
The staffing ordinance would just have to go away, though?
It would.
Okay.
I, I mean, this council could, could pass a staffing ordinance for twenty-twenty-six, or I should say, um, but I'm not sure it would be binding.
I'm, I'm not trying to drag this out, I know we got a lot of legislation still this evening, but it's just raising another question now, because you've, you stated in previous meetings that we've discussed this, that there's different formats, if you will, of statutory form of government and which positions are created in there. So my question is, because the, we are council, if we were to do that, we would then technically be choosing the citizens' form of government, which they did not necessarily vote for though.
Well, each of those optional votes would are, have to be done by the voters, not by council.
And so we would create it, it would go on the ballot.
Well, I don't think so, because this council's under the charter, not the, so, so think of it this way, the statutory form of government, the charter is the city's constitution. The statutory form of government is also the city's constitution. It's just, the difference is who writes it. The, the charter is written by local folks. The statutory constitution is written by the General Assembly. You can't have two constitutions at the same time, you can only have one. So the charter applies now, so when the statutory form applies, or when the statutory says something, but the charter says something else, council can't go, oh, well, we just want to grab the authority from the statute. You don't have that option, you have to follow the charter today. Now, of course, January first, twenty-twenty-six, that's supposed to change, but the question is today, what can council do? And so those options are only under the statutory form, not the charter form. So I don't think council could do that. And the one thing that we can be sure of from the fourth district's holding is, I, the way they wrote their decision, I don't think council has authority to put it before the voters.
Okay.
Sure. Um, let me put it this way, council, not to go back to what we talked, council certainly has the right to appeal. Now, whether or not that's a good or wise decision is a separate question, but we don't have the, council does not have the option to disobey the Court of Appeals. And if the Court of Appeals says council can't put something on the ballot under the constitutional procedures, the city has to obey that. And now, the voters can put form of government questions on the ballot anytime they want to, as often as, they could do it every, every election, every primary election, every general election. They can do it as often as they want to. There's no legal inhibition. I'm going to guess the voters probably don't want to vote on that every year, like, just, I guess, maybe just speak for myself. I don't like voting on the same thing over and over again, I get tired of it. So, and the reason they voted for something is they want finality. And that's what the law contemplates them having finality, is just how to ensure that finality is, is one of the challenges.
Any other questions for Mr. Rowe? Thank you. All right, moving on to ordinances for a second reading, ordinance ninety-one, twenty-four.
And ordinance authorizing the payout of one thousand eight hundred seventy-nine dollars sixty-one cents to Brian Dufresne for unused vacation from a prior term of service period. Whereas Brian Dufresne recently left the employ of the city, whereas Mr. Dufresne previously was employed by another municipality. But before, but before that was in the employ of the city, implement which he left in two thousand fifteen. Whereas the city auditor recently discovered Mr. Dufresne had accrued vacation time prior to his two thousand fifteen departure, which the city failed to pay at that time. Whereas Mr. Dufresne has accrued a total of sixty-six point seven hours of vacation time, for which he was and is entitled to payment by the city. Now therefore be ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio as follows. The city auditor is hereby authorized for, and instructed to pay to Brian Dufresne some of one thousand eight hundred seventy-nine dollars sixty-one cents for the sixty-six point seven hours of accrued vacation time, for which Mr. Dufresne is entitled to payout upon leaving the employment of the city. City manager, acting city manager and or police chief is hereby authorized to sign any necessary agreement with Mr. Dufresne to effectuate and settle this payout. By members of council voting to declare an emergency, this ordinance is hereby passed as an emergency measure pursuant to O R C seven thirty-one point thirty, Article four, Section four point zero nine through four point one one. As an emergency in the operation of the city government, as the payments to Mr. Dufresne are now due and owing by the city and is necessary for the immediate preservation of the public peace, health, safety, morals or welfare of the city, and this ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon its adoption. Will enacted by council on second reading the ninth day of December, two thousand twenty-four.
Okay, motion to suspend the rules? So move. There's a second? Second. Clerk call the roll on suspension.
Uh, Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Clement?
Yes.
Insane?
Yes.
Mr. Dumping?
Yes.
Mr. Flower?
Yes. Motion to adopt? So move. Second. Any council discussion on adoption? Clerk call the roll.
Um, Mr. Clement?
Yes.
Insane?
Yes.
Mr. Dumping?
Yes.
Mr. Flower?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes. Ordinance ninety-one, twenty-four passes. Ordinance for a second reading, ninety-two, twenty-four.
And ordinance confirming the appointment of attorney Jonathan E. Rowe to be city attorney for the period January first, two thousand twenty-five, through December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five, and authorizing the city to enter into a contract there to, when declaring an emergency. Whereas the current contract for city attorney is set to expire December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four. Whereas the city manager has authored authority pursuant to Nelsonville City Charter, Section four point zero five one, to appoint a qualified person to serve as city attorney, which qualifications are set forth in Nelsonville City Charter, Section six point zero five. Whereas the city manager's appointment of a city attorney is subject to confirmation and approval by council as set forth in Nelsonville City Charter, Section four point zero eight one one and six point zero five. Whereas the office of city manager has appointed Jonathan E. Rowe to be city attorney for a term commenced in January first, two thousand twenty-five, and ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five, on a part-time basis. Whereas said Jonathan E. Rowe possesses the requisite qualifications to serve as city attorney for a term commenced in January first, two thousand twenty-five, and ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five. Now therefore be ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio as follows. The office of city manager's appointment of Jonathan, attorney Jonathan E. Rowe to be city attorney for a term commenced in January first, two thousand twenty-five, and ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five, on a part-time basis, is hereby confirmed and approved by a majority of council. City manager, acting city manager and or police chief is hereby authorized to enter into a contract with Jonathan E. Rowe for compensation for the city attorney, for a term commenced in January first, two thousand twenty-five, and ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five, on a part-time basis. A copy of the contract is attached heretofore as Exhibit A, and is incorporated in its entirety for the purposes as they're set forth herein. The compensation for the city attorney for such terms shall be as approved and set forth in Exhibit A. No other compensation may be paid to the city attorney except as provided for by law. The city attorney shall have such authority and duties as are set forth in Nelsonville City Charter for the office of city attorney. The council hereby finds that this ordinance was adopted in a meeting open to the public. By members of council voting to declare an emergency, this ordinance is hereby passed as an emergency measure pursuant to O R C seven thirty-one point thirty, Article four, Sections four point zero nine through four point one one, as an emergency in the operation of the city government, as the pain, um, as the contract must be in effect by January first, two thousand twenty-five. Will enacted by council on first reading on the ninth day of September, or December, two thousand twenty-four.
Motion to suspend the rules? So move. Second. Any council discussion? Clerk call the roll on suspension.
Insane?
Yes.
Mr. Dumping?
Yes.
Mr. Flower?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Clement?
Yes. Motion to adopt? So move.
Second.
Uh, any council discussion? Clerk call the roll.
Uh, Mr. Dumping?
Yes.
Mr. Flower?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Clement?
Yes.
Insane?
Yes.
Ordinance ninety-two, twenty-four passes. Ordinance ninety-three, twenty-four, if someone would introduce it? Or this is?
And ordinance authorizing settlement of certain litigation and authorizing payment in case number two-three-C one zero one zero one. Whereas the parties have agreed on a monetary amount to resolve the issues in case number two-three-C one zero one zero one. Whereas it is necessary for council to authorize payment in the amount of ninety-eight thousand three hundred seventy-one dollars ninety-nine cents to fully resolve case number two-three-C one zero one zero one. Whereas council authorizes attorney Austin Richards of Reminger Company, L P A, to resolve case number twenty-three-C one zero one zero one in the amount of ninety-eight thousand three hundred seventy-one dollars ninety-nine cents. Contention on additional terms being agreed to by the parties per Mr. Richards' satisfaction. Whereas council requires that a written settlement agreement be fully executed before any settlement papers shall be dispersed. Now therefore be ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio as follows. The city council of the city of Nelsonville hereby authorizes and directs attorney Austin Richards of Reminger Company, L P A, to negotiate and enter into a settlement agreement for case number two-three-C one zero one zero one. Should the terms of the settlement release, should the terms of the settlement release be to attorney Richard's satisfaction, the council hereby authorizes and directs the city auditor to issue a settlement payment in the amount of ninety-eight thousand three hundred seventy-one dollars ninety-nine cents, as shall be provided in the written settlement agreement fully executed by the party, provided that no payment shall be issued unless and until the city auditor is provided a copy of such fully executed written settlement agreement. City council hereby finds that this ordinance was adopted in a meeting open to the public as required by applicable law. By members of council voting to dispense with the two readings of this ordinance, the rules are hereby suspended for this ordinance. And this ordinance is hereby enacted on the first reading pursuant to O R C seven thirty-one point one five, and that's Nelsonville City Charter, Section four point zero nine through four point one one. This ordinance is hereby passed as an emergency measure pursuant to O R C seven thirty-one point thirty, Article four, Section four point zero nine through four point one one, as an emergency in the operation of the city government, because the full resolution of case number two-four-C one zero one four is desirable immediately. one zero one four four is desirable immediately to minimize litigation costs to the city and is necessary for the immediate preservation of the public peace, health, safety, morals or welfare of the city and this ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon its adoption. Will enacted by council on first reading or suspending the rules the ninth day of December two thousand twenty-four.
Motion to suspend the rules?
So moved. Second.
Any council discussion?
Can, can we tell the public what this is?
This is on suspension first. We'll, we'll get to that.
Okay, thank you.
Clerk call the roll on suspension.
Mr. Flowers?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Clement?
Yes.
Insane?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Uh, motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Council discussion?
Mr. Flowers? Mr.?
Yeah, I was just asking if we could let the, yes, tell, that's for Mr.
Yes.
Hunter, right?
Yes, this is Mr. Hunter's.
Mr. Hunter's, uh, settlement?
Yes.
Right?
Okay. And if I may just, um, continue to keep Mr. Hunter, your thoughts and prayers, just giving his, his help issue. Exactly. Um, both, both council and members of the public.
Any other comments? Clerk call the roll.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Clement?
Yes.
Insane?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Flower?
Yes.
Ordinance ninety-three twenty-four passes. Ordinance ninety-four twenty-four, if someone would like to introduce it?
Oh, go ahead. I'll introduce it.
And ordinance increasing sewer rates by four percent. Whereas based on the financial projections from Rural Community Assistance Partnership, June, the June twenty-twenty version sewer rate needed to be increased by five percent beginning on January first two thousand twenty-four to complete the rates required to finance the new city of Nelsonville Sewer Plant. Whereas sewer rates must be increased in twenty twenty-five to meet the funding for the new sewer plant and ensure operation of the new sewer plant remains on sound familiar footing. Whereas the four percent increase in sewer rates is sufficient to maintain sound financial operations of the new sewer plant. Whereas revenue received as a result of the four percent increase in sewer rates shall be used only to cover increased cost of sewer plant operations and not for equipment. Now therefore be ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio as follows. After the effective date of this ordinance, the new sewer rates are twenty, in twenty twenty-five are increased as follows. In town, fifteen hundred gallons minimum is twenty-one dollars thirty-one cents. Every one thousand gallons over the fifteen hundred gallons is twelve dollars and eighty-eight cents. The out of town minimum fifteen hundred gallons is thirty-one dollars ninety-six cents. And, uh, for every thousand gallons over that fifteen hundred gallons is nineteen dollars and thirty-one cents. Hocking County Commissioner's rate per one thousand gallons is five dollars fifty cents. By members of council voting to dispense with the two readings of this ordinance, the rules are hereby suspended for this ordinance. And this ordinance is hereby enacted on first reading to O R C seven thirty-one point one five in Nelsonville City Charter, Sections four point zero nine through four point one one. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect at the earliest date provided by law. Accordingly, pursuant to Nelsonville City Charter, Section four point one one, this ordinance shall be effective thirty days after its passage. Will enacted by council on first reading the ninth day of December two thousand twenty-four.
Motion to suspend the rules?
So moved.
Second.
Council discussion on suspension? Clerk call the roll.
Mr. Clement?
Yes.
Insane?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Flower?
No.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes. So that's four votes. Doesn't show. That would be.
It's lowering the rate.
Increase, it's an increase.
It's an increase.
To keep up with the,
Low rate.
The schedules of, it was stuff that was planned in twenty twenty.
But I thought it was something.
Yeah.
Sorry.
So this is for, for you. Correct. Okay.
So this will be the first reading of this ordinance. I would like to say, just to reiterate, that this is to cover the cost of sewer plant operations. It's not for wages or equipment.
Keep up with the financing of the sewer plant. That's right, the first, first paragraph.
And these were planned rate increases from the beginning.
Yes, they were approved in, uh, twenty nineteen, I believe, is when they were approved by the old head of the utilities committee.
Ordinance ninety-five twenty-four, if someone would introduce it?
I'll introduce it.
Thank you. And ordinance increasing trash rate four percent effective January eighth, two thousand twenty-five. Whereas trash rates must be increased effective January eighth, two thousand twenty-five by a rate of four percent to maintain the financial stability and health of the city's trash service to its residents. Now therefore be ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio as follows. Effectively January, January eighth, twenty twenty-five, trash rates are hereby increased and set as follows. Trash rates are hereby increased from thirteen dollars fifty-nine cents to fourteen dollars thirteen cents per customer per month for curbside refus and rubbish collection for one residence or unit of seven bags. Recycle bin and service included per customer per month for curbside recycling. I think. Two dollars per container per month for optional rental token or equivalent. Five dollar per sticker for special rubbish items, large items and trash bag. Two, two bags per sticker above the allotted quantities. City council hereby finds that this ordinance was adopted in a meeting open to the public as required by applicable law. By members of council voting to dispense with the two readings of this ordinance, the rules are hereby suspended for this ordinance and this ordinance is hereby enacted on first reading pursuant to O R C seven thirty-one point one five and Nelsonville City Charter, Sections four point zero nine through four point one one. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect at the earliest date provided by law. Will enacted by council on first reading the ninth day of December two thousand twenty-four.
Motion to suspend the rules?
Motion to suspend. So moved.
Counsel comments on suspension? Clerk call the roll.
Insane?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Flowers?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Clement?
Motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Counsel discussion? Clerk call the roll.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Flowers?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Clement?
Yes.
Insane?
Yes.
Ordinance ninety-five twenty-four passes.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear those from Mr. Clement on the suspension. Was it a yes?
Yeah.
Okay. I did say I was getting my hearing checked recently.
You gotta speak up for the cheap seats, man.
I guess, yeah.
Uh, ordinance ninety-six twenty-four, if someone would introduce it? So moved.
And ordinance amendment of two thousand twenty-four appropriations ordinance to amend the appropriations at the close of business on December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four to match the actual expenditures and anticipated receipts through December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four. Whereas the appropriations ordinance needs to be adjusted so that the quotes of business each year, so the funds appropriated match actual expenditures and anticipated receipts. Now therefore be ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio as follows. The twenty twenty-four appropriations are amended at the close of business on December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four to match actual expenditures and anticipated receipts through December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four. The appropriations are increased or decreased by said amount. By members of council voting to dispense with the two readings of this ordinance, the rules are hereby suspended for this ordinance. And this ordinance is hereby enacted on first reading pursuant to O R C seven thirty-one point one five and Nelsonville City Charter, Sections four point zero nine through four point one one. Pursuant to Nelsonville City Charter, Section four point one one, because this ordinance provides for appropriations for current expenses of the city, this ordinance shall be counted effective immediately, immediately on passage. Accordingly, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon its adoption. Otherwise, it shall be in full force and effect at the earliest time permitted by law. Will enacted by council on first reading the ninth day of December two thousand twenty-four.
Motion to suspend the rules?
So moved. Second.
Counsel discussion? Uh, roll call on suspension?
Mr. Flowers?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Clement?
Yes.
Insane?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Counsel discussion?
Uh, can I ask a question? Um, I read this earlier today and, um, does this mean that you, you'll be out of balance at the end of the year and you want authority to add money to the balance or take? I mean, tell me a little bit about what this means.
No, it's a good question. It's our end of year ordinance. Um, it predates probably when I was born, to be honest. Uh, but each year council passes it to basically zero out all allowable expenses. So on December thirty-first, council is saying no more twenty-four expenses, zero, like, in other words, if ten thousand is appropriated, but five thousand is spent, council is saying bring it down to five thousand. No more can be spent in that level or any level. Um, to allow us to close the books to go into twenty-five. So what happens to the five, a good period over? Yeah, as, well essentially. So essentially it just, um, does not allow us to spend it in twenty-four. And then, of course, council's already set the budget for twenty-five. Um, so there's, essentially, the two ordinances put together allow us to only spend what council has authorized. So does this give, does this give you the authority to add money to it? No. Okay. Nope. Good question.
Any others discussion? Clerk call the roll.
Uh, Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Clement?
Yes.
Insane?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Flower?
Yes.
Ordinance ninety-six twenty-four passes. Ordinance ninety-seven twenty-four, if someone would introduce it?
And ordinance authorizing fire chief to donate out of service bunker gear to Mountain Angels Rescue for use in mountain rescue efforts in western North Carolina for recovery from Hurricane Helene. Whereas Hurricane Helene devastated locations in the western mountains of North Carolina. Whereas Mountain Angels Rescue is a nonprofit agency dedicated to mountain rescue efforts in western North Carolina, including recovery efforts in the wake of Hurricane Helene. Whereas Nelsonville Fire Department has the cache of non-compliant out of service bunker gear items. Whereas Nelsonville Fire Department has no use for the cache of non-compliant out of service bunker gear items and therefore the city of Nelsonville no longer has need of the equipment for a public purpose. Whereas in the past, such equipment has been donated to other agencies to use for foul weather gear or simply discarded. Whereas council determines it is in the best interest of the city of Nelsonville to donate the equipment to Mountain Angels Rescue, which has an immediate need for the equipment to be used as foul weather gear. Whereas delivery of the equipment needs to take place mid next week. Now therefore be ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio as follows. The fire chief is hereby authorized and directed to donate a cache of non-compliant out of service bunker gear items currently in possession of the Nelsonville Fire Department to Mountain Angels Rescue. The fire chief is authorized to take all necessary steps to ensure proper handling of the equipment to ensure it properly gets delivered to Mountain Angels Rescue. By members of council voting to dispense with the two readings of this ordinance, the rule for hereby suspended for this ordinance and this ordinance is hereby enacted on first reading pursuant to O R C seven thirty-one point one five and Nelsonville City Charter, Sections four point zero nine through four point one one. This ordinance is hereby passed as an emergency measure pursuant to O R C seven thirty-one point thirty, Article four, Section four point zero nine through four point one one, as an emergency in the operation of the city government because there is a need to dispose of the out of state equipment and an immediate need to deliver the equipment to Mountain Angels Rescue for use in mountain rescue efforts and is necessary for the immediate preservation of the public peace, health, safety, morals or welfare of the city and this ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon its adoption. Will enacted by council on first reading the ninth day of December two thousand twenty-four.
Motion to suspend the rules?
So moved.
Second.
Counsel discussion? Clerk, uh, clerk call the roll, please.
Um, Mr. Clement?
Yes.
Insane?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Flower?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Motion to adopt?
So moved.
Counsel discussion? So, uh, Chief Arbor, how much, uh, equipment are we donating? Do you kind of give us a?
At least if you've got probably, uh, twenty sets of bunker gear, which would be coats and pants. You don't believe we have any boots right now, um. But this year, this year that we can't use for IDO age environments anymore. So we, soon as we hit the ten-year lifespan for F D A, we can pick when we take that gear back in service. And if asked, we have given that stuff to the, the utility department, they wanted something for foul weather gear or boots or gloves. Uh, we used to donate to agencies like the Shryd County Fire E M S program. But when we found out that, uh, it's not worth it now because we're not putting these kids in, uh, live fire burns towards the end of their classes. And they happen to have a point here to do that. I thought this was a good use of myself and Chief Curtis from Water River. Been in contact with this agency and he's been orchestrating quite a few, uh, deliveries in the area. But we're planning to know.
He's gonna pick that up, baby.
Uh, we're gonna have it delivered or we're gonna drive it now, don't know what we're doing yet. We're trying to make.
Do those pair align?
How contribute the gas?
We're still, we're also thinking, uh, our department's also taking, uh, LP gas containers right now too. They're getting ready to take loads. They work for a lot of them.
That's a, that's a good cost.
Any other, um, council discussion? Clerk call the roll.
Insane?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Flower?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Clement?
Yes.
Ordinance ninety-seven twenty-four passes. Oh boy. Uh, ordinance ninety-eight twenty-four, if someone would like to introduce it?
I'll introduce it.
Thank you.
Thank Mr. Rowe for writing that.
Yeah.
I didn't talk on that one.
And ordinance establishing an advisory commission on the implementation of issue twenty-three and declaring an emergency. Whereas by Revolution twenty-three oh five, Nelsonville City Council reaffirmed the city's commitment to respecting the right of the people of the city of Nelsonville to choose the form of government for the city of Nelsonville. Whereas issue twenty-three was an ordinance submitted to the voters of Nelsonville under the initiative procedures set forth in Article ten of the Nelsonville City Charter. Whereas the voters of Nelsonville voted to adopt the issue twenty-three ordinance to abolish Nelsonville City Charter and establish a mayoral form of government under the Ohio Revised Code. Whereas Nelsonville City Charter, Section four point zero eight three empowers Nelsonville City Council to, quote, "set up such additional departments, boards or commissions as it may be necessary and determine their powers and duties," unquote. Whereas the Nelsonville City Charter, Article seven governs the creation of and rules governing commissions which the city of Nelsonville may create and establish. Whereas given the complexities associated with implementation of issue twenty-three and facilitating any lawful transition, council finds it is necessary and facilitating any lawful transition, council finds it is necessary and expedient to establish an advisory advisory commission to advise council on implement implementation of issue twenty three. Whereas you do, you, I can't talk. Whereas Judiciary Committee has recommended to council that council create the advisory commission. Whereas council determines it is necessary and expedient for the advisory commission to have full authority to gather information and present recommendations to council to implement issue twenty three and to facilitate the transition. Now therefore be ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville Athens County, Ohio as follows. The advisory commission created and established. Council hereby creates and establishes the advisory commission on the implementation of issue twenty three. The advisory advisory commission shall be composed of six electors of the city of Nelsonville. However, no person currently serving as an elected or appointed office of the city of Nelsonville shall be eligible to serve on the advisory commission. Each member appointed to the advisory commission shall be entitled to all rights and privileges associated with serving on the advisory commission. Pursuant to Nelsonville City Charter, section seven point zero three A six, the city manager or his designee shall serve as ex officio member of the advisory commission, but shall have no vote. Members of the commission shall serve from the date of their respective appointment through December thirty first two thousand twenty five. The advisory commission shall dissolve on December thirty first two thousand twenty five, unless the council shall by law extend the date for dissolution. Powers of the advisory commission. The advisory commission shall have full power gathering information to prepare recommendations to council. The advisory commission shall have full power to conduct hearings and to compel the production of testimony and evidence as it prepares recommendations to council. The advisory commission shall have power to elect its own officers and establish its own rules as provided in Article seven of the Nelsonville City Charter. The city attorney shall serve as legal counsel to the advisory commission. The advisory commission shall have power to formally transmit to council such recommendations as the advisory commission, in its sole discretion and judgment, shall deem appropriate to transmit. Upon transmission to council of any recommendations, such recommendation shall be added to the agenda of the next regular council meeting for council consideration and discussion. The advisory commission shall remain independent in the exercise of its powers as granted to Iran, subject only to law. Accordingly, it shall be unlawful for any person to unlawfully interfere with the advisory commission's exercise of its powers and authority, provided that this prohibition shall not be construed as to abridging the First Amendment right of any person. The advisory commission shall keep a journal or other records of its proceedings according to law and shall be cause at such journal or record with the clerk of council. Compensation of members of the advisory commission shall be paid a monthly salary of one hundred dollars each for their service. The advisory commission may appoint a secretary of the advisory commission pursuant to Nelsonville City Charter, section seven point zero three A two. Unless otherwise provided for by law, the secretary shall be paid a monthly stipend of one thousand dollars for his or her service. By members of council voting to dispense with the two readings of this ordinance, the rules are hereby suspended for this ordinance and this ordinance is hereby enacted on the first reading pursuant to O R C seven thirty one point one five and Nelsonville City Charter, section four point zero nine through four point one one. This ordinance is hereby passed as an emergency measure pursuant to O R C seven thirty one point thirty, Article four, sections four point zero nine through four point one one, as an emergency in the operation of the city government because there is a need to implement issue twenty three to the extent of the law permits and is necessary for the immediate preservation of the public peace, health, safety, morals, or welfare of the city. And this ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon its adoption. Fully enacted by council on first reading the ninth day of December two thousand twenty four.
Motion to suspend the rules?
So moved.
Second.
Council discussion on suspension?
Hmm, just a little bit. I didn't know that you were gonna put in here about they have the power to.
So the charter, the charter says the commission has the power to elect their chair and vice chair.
Okay.
Oh. This is on suspension. Right. We'll get to that. Clerk call the roll on suspension?
Uh, Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Flower?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Clement?
Yes.
Mr. Sonnen?
Yes.
Motion to adopt?
So moved. Second.
I'm sorry. Council discussion? Council discussion. Okay. You have the floor.
Um, I got involved in asking some folks, so they have to elect who they want to preside over this? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, so um, section seven of three A two of the charter says each board commission shall elect a chair and vice chair.
Okay.
And shall appoint, so I, I guess if, if it's council's pleasure, council could always say kind of like the initial chair and then they can vote amongst themselves and the prior chair.
Okay.
Um, maybe when council has the vote to appoint the people, maybe, maybe that's the time to kind of like designate a temporary chair, just so they don't have to spin their wheels in the first.
Yes.
So do we just appoint someone or do we take letters of interest first or?
The charter does not require a whole lot in terms of formality, just ha, it has to be a vote of all who are currently serving. So if there's a vacancy, like the number of votes actually decreases by, if there are vacancies.
Mr. President, I would suggest that um, after we vote yea or nay on this um, ordinance and assuming it passes, then I think that uh, we should ask for individuals to submit their name.
Letters of interest, just like they do for open council seats.
Or, yeah, or other boards or revenue.
Maybe.
Over.
Everyone.
Send them letters.
Of their intent for this board and submit them to the city manager or to the council clerk. I'd say the council clerk actually.
Yeah.
Like a cute, she loves responsibility.
She does.
She loves her.
I could feel the glare.
Well, that's just because I'm bald. But anyway. Um, I think it would be great if they do submit a letter and, and submit it to the council clerk and she presents them to council.
But the, the, my question would be who would, who would pick from those letters as submitted? Would that be us?
That'd be about the one thing. So if you get ten candidates, we would vote on six of them to.
I guess council could always amend this to just, if there are ten, you could just say, well, let's make it ten.
Yeah.
That would be better.
I think the more.
Has to be an odd number.
Yeah.
It has to be.
Yeah.
I, I just kind of came up with that number because that's easy. I didn't want to have it be twenty and then.
I mean, it has to be an odd number. I think there has to be five, seven, knowing to keep your vote to deciding.
Sure. I don't know if this makes any difference. It may not, but I, I would think in my little mind that we shouldn't, the council shouldn't have relatives and stuff.
No.
You know, I mean.
I agree.
Nothing, you know, that type of thing.
True, we went through that with other things.
Yeah.
I'm with you. And one other thing, um, so the, the commission would have to appoint a secretary. Of course, the secretary has the duty to uh, keep the journal of the commission, which I anticipate may wind up being kind of rather lengthy. Um, that's why there is the provision in there for this, the salary for the secretary. The, the charter says the secretary can either be a member of the commission or with the um, permission of the city manager could be someone else who's already employed. I, I guess it would be like the administrative assistant might. I guess we don't have one anymore, but.
We actually had that before, sure. We've had the employees participate in committees and, and uh, we did that with code for a bit and we also did, just Steve Pearson was very active with a lot of our committees. Um, so yeah, that's, that's, that's a common practice that we've, we've done.
Well, motion to suspend?
Um, we, we always have a motion to shut off.
Well, I, I have another question under discussion. Um, these, these meetings are open to the public.
Absolutely.
Well, that's nice.
Yes.
Sure.
Um, okay, any other discussion? Five dollars. Clerk call the, go ahead.
Well, just kind of an administrative thing with.
No, I'm tradition. If they were more constructive, you could put ten, I would just need ten dollars. I'm certainly anticipating attending meetings as directed by the commission.
So how would this commission set up dates when they're gonna be taken out through council, let us know?
I think council once makes the appointment would set the date for the first meeting and then the council would, or sorry, the commission would then set the dates for the rest of it. The council wouldn't have authority to do.
Right, there you go.
Why don't we call every other? Question.
Um, our next council meeting.
Is second Monday in January.
January, I think they need to put out the notice and that needs to be cut off time.
Yeah.
So that would be January thirteenth?
January thirteenth.
Thirteenth.
Anyone, anyone interested needs to have our letters sent for thirteen?
January.
For January.
I have.
All I hope. I hope we get some people interested in that process. See how good people. Not that there's any bad people.
Okay. Uh, clerk call the roll?
Mr. Flowers?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Clement?
Yes.
Mr. Sonnen?
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, ordinance ninety eight twenty four is adopted.
Could I put just one question, I question number? If you said you could have up to ten, ten people apply, what, how, only four, four, six people apply? That's okay too.
Um, I, I would say you'd have to keep it at an odd number.
Well, we just, we just, we just passed an ordinance that states that maybe it would be six, you know, members, so.
But what if you don't get six?
If you, we, we have boards and commissions that we don't have full currently.
And that's okay.
And we have to, yes, they can still, you know, meet.
Function.
Function, but we have, we still try to fulfill those seats.
Yeah. So, so I guess to, to your question, Mr. Group, if let's say four people, only four people, council can appoint the four, that would be a quorum for that body to do business, but then let's say a month, then a fifth person raised, they're gonna say, hey, I could, then the council could.
Right down. Yep. Yep.
Okay. Resolution twenty three twenty seven, if someone would introduce it. I'll introduce it.
A resolution accepting a safety intervention grant to the Nelsonville Fire Department for the purchase of extrication equipment. Whereas Nelsonville Fire Department submitted a safety intervention grant application to the Ohio Viewers of Workers' Compensation or B W C. Whereas the B W C approved the application and awarded the city of Nelsonville a safety intervention grant in the amount of four thousand five hundred twenty five dollars fifty cents for the purchase of the extrication equipment. Whereas the city of Nelsonville finds the need of the safety intervention grant is in the best interest of the city of Nelsonville. Now therefore be resolved by the council of the city of Nelsonville Athens County, Ohio as follows. The city hereby authorizes and directs fire chief to receive on behalf of the city a safety intervention grant in the amount of four thousand five hundred twenty five dollars fifty cents from the Ohio Department of, of Workers' Compensation. The received grant funds shall be used only for the purchase of extrication equipment for the use by the city of Nelsonville. The fire chief is hereby authorized and directed to comply with all necessary reporting requirements set by the B W C and submit all necessary and or required written reports to the B W C. The council hereby finds this resolution was adopted in a meeting open to the public as required by applicable law. This resolution shall be in full force and effect at the earliest time permitted by law. Fully adopted by council on first reading the ninth day of December two thousand twenty four.
Motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Council discussion? Clerk call the roll?
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Clement?
Yes.
Mr. Sonnen?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Flowers?
Yes.
Resolution twenty three twenty seven passes. Uh, resolution twenty three twenty eight, if someone would like to introduce it. Sure, I'll introduce it.
A resolution accepting a crisis intervention team scholarship grant to the Nelsonville Police Department. Whereas the Nelsonville Police Department submitted a grant application for a crisis intervention team or C I T scholarship grant from the National Alliance on Mental Illness Ohio or N A M I Ohio. Whereas N A M I Ohio approved the application and awarded the city of Nelsonville a scholarship grant in the amount of three thousand six hundred dollars to be used for two Nelsonville police officers. Whereas the city, Nelsonville City Council finds receipt of the C I T scholarship grant is in the best interest of the city of Nelsonville. Now therefore be it resolved by the council of the city of Nelsonville Athens County, Ohio as follows. The city hereby authorizes and directs police chief to receive on behalf of the city a crisis intervention team scholarship grant in the amount of three thousand six hundred dollars from the National Alliance on Mental Illness Ohio. The received grant funds shall be used only for a C I T scholarship for two Nelsonville police officer. The police chief is hereby authorized and directed to comply with all necessary reporting requirements set by the N A M I Ohio and submit all necessary and or written required written reports to the N A, N A M I Ohio for the C I T scholarship grant. City council hereby finds this resolution was adopted in a meeting open to the public as required by applicable law. This resolution shall be in full force and effect at the earliest time permitted by law. Fully adopted by council on first reading the ninth day of December two thousand twenty four.
Motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Council discussion?
Uh, I, I have a question for the chief.
Yeah.
This, uh, this is, is to be used for two Nelsonville police officers. What? Just a little.
Yeah, it's a retro, so the officers have already attended the training.
Oh, okay.
To offset costs for sending them.
Okay, got you. Got you.
Anyone else? Clerk call the roll, please.
Mr. Clement?
Yes.
Mr. Sonnen?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Flowers?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Resolution twenty three twenty eight passes. Resolution twenty three twenty nine, if someone would like to introduce it.
I saw you. A resolution also authorizing the city to publish a request for proposals for a project to retrofit an existing SCADA control panel at the Nelsonville Water Treatment Plant. Whereas there is a need to retrofit an existing SCADA control panel at the Nelsonville Water Treatment Plant. Whereas there is a need for the city to publish a request for proposals to meet the legal requirements for competitive bidding for this project. Whereas Nelsonville City Council finds it is in the best interest of the city of Nelsonville to call the, to call the publish the request for proposals for this project. Now therefore be it resolved by the council of the city of Nelsonville Athens County, Ohio as follows. The city shall publish a request for proposals for bid for a project to retrofit an existing SCADA control panel at the Nelsonville Water Treatment Plant. The request for proposal shall be in accordance with the specifications set forth in Exhibit A, which is attached here to an incorporated hearing by Reverend. The council hereby finds that this resolution was adopted in a meeting open to the public as required by applicable law. This resolution shall be in full force and effect at the earliest time permitted by law. Fully adopted by council on first reading the ninth day of December two thousand twenty four.
Motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Council discussion? So I'm looking down the list of uh, equipment that needs replaced. How old is the water treatment plant? When was that built?
Been messed up since the day it was built.
Uh, let's see, started, um,
I think for ten years.
Ten years.
Yeah, it would have been. Yeah, it would have been two thousand and three, twenty years.
Yeah.
We finished it the first, my first full, uh, term on council.
Yep.
Yeah.
This, this seems to be an awful lot of equipment that needs replaced on a plant that's only ten years old.
Now it changes cost.
Well, the, the primary issue is the control system that was put in the plant when it was first created was kind of a proprietary system, but I don't think took a lot of traction.
Or after the analog to digital.
Yeah.
No matter what digital.
Yeah, so we're.
So can communicate and be up there.
Yeah, so we need some updates, um, sourcing parts for the, the previous control systems has been difficult and so, all of the digital upgrades.
All right. Any other council discussions? Clerk, call the roll.
Ms. Sonic?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Flower?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Coman?
Yeah.
Resolution twenty-three twenty-nine passes. Okay, city manager first.
Let's start off on a good note. I went to the tree lighting ceremony that was on the square. It was a pretty awesome event. It was a great turnout. Really wanna thank Mr. LeBrew and all the other members of the Chamber of Commerce for putting on a pretty, great community event. Um, the bids for the Canal Street project had come in, and not only was the initial estimate lower than anticipated, the bids came in lower than anticipated as well. So, pretty good outcome for us. Uh, they're anticipating a spring start time for construction on that. It will be a phased project, so they won't be doing all of Canal Street at once. They'll be starting, I believe, on the west end and piecing their way down. That's time to move. Um, restarted the hiring process for administrative assistant. Uh, we will, should be having some interviews later this week, maybe next week. Uh, we're continuing to send out real registration notifications, so we'll continue to get more news in. And otherwise, the only other thing I need to do is to be consistent with the other rate increases. I've recommended the water rate be increased to four percent for twenty twenty-five.
Sending that in here.
So, now there's, so you're the water free, the water rate increase for twenty twenty-five to?
That has to be reviewed. That's a utility increase, that has to be, then.
City manager has to, or you've reviewed that increase, I believe.
I'd have to review the, the legislation. I can, I can do that and, and provide a written report.
Okay, okay. I, I think, I think the watering, the water side, the city manager has to afford a decree.
That's correct.
But do we need a motion to do it or?
I'd have to review the roll, because I have to review the legislation.
I, I, I'm sorry, I just don't know the answer.
Yeah.
But I, I wanna give a correct answer.
Okay.
Any other questions for, uh, Chief Oliver?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Good of the order. Uh, Sonic, would you like to start?
Yes, I would. Um, I just wish that all of the naysayers that sat in that outside here was present when we read ordinance ninety-eight twenty-four, setting up this commission advisory, advisory commission to help get together the to implement how we can make transition. Because it seems to me that there was a lot of people that are fighting about this. And they weren't here to listen to this. I think it's very important.
Absolutely.
And Merry Christmas, everybody. I see your shirt.
No, everybody forgot. There's one other item in my report. Um, one of the differences between the statutory form of government and charter form of government is under the statute, the city law director is required to provide free legal advice to the school district at the city's expense. So that's just something to keep in mind and part of the transition that needs to be accounted for.
And they have to live in Nelsonville, that correct, sir?
Yes, in, in Orange, but, the, the, just in terms of kind of preparing for that, that's just something that, uh, that needs to be kept in mind. Thank you. And I, I apologize for speaking out of turn.
No, you're fine, thank you. Next time I'll shake your head.
Yeah. Uh, Mr. Duffy? Many times.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes, I would like to reiterate Sergeant's thunder with, you know, the paragraph of by resolution twenty-three oh five, Nelsonville City Council reaffirms the city's commitment to respecting the right of the people of the city of Nelsonville to choose the form of government for the city of Nelsonville. And to quote one of the naysayers, city council meeting tonight, seven o'clock, please attend, they are going to take away our vote. I'm just curious where you got that information from, because most of those people that come up with this would rather run up a tree and would rather run up a tree and lie to you than stand to your face and tell the truth. Some of them are incapable of telling the truth. Don't believe the hype. This stuff's gotta stop. This is part of the problem. Guys, it's not all council. It's a, a, a select few that have left. Well, some of them are here tonight, some of them aren't. But it's, it's gotta stop. Stop it. It's absolutely ludicrous to, to, to start that stuff and to get on the radio and run your mouth about absolutely nothing true. Absolutely nothing true. Sad. Thank you. Rant over.
Merry Christmas. Can I make those?
Mr. Flowers?
Um, yeah, well.
Don't lie.
No, you're right, you're right.
Don't you ruin your eyes.
You're a nice woman. You, uh, I would like to, uh, compliment the, um, I think it was the Chamber of Commerce that put on that parade this weekend on, of, of town. I mean, there was beaucoup people up there. beaucoup means a whole bunch. There was a lot of people there, uh, and I was observing it, you know, and it was really, uh, lots of children and lots of, uh, nice, uh, some nice floats, you know, and, uh, it was really nice, and I compliment, I think it was the chamber that did that, so correct me if I'm wrong, but, uh, yeah, it was very nice, and I think there's a lot of stuff that, uh, that Tony said that was probably, probably true, you know, some.
Whoa, you stop it.
No, I mean, no, no, it's, no, it's, it's, Jesus, God. There are thought I'd agree with you.
You're gonna get in trouble now.
I know, well, but, but I think there is. I think there's a lot of things, but I think a lot of the things you read are people's opinions and not fact. And I think the fact of the matter is what we're trying to get to. And I think if we worry about people's opinions about it that, that we don't agree with, I think it's just gonna drive wedges deeper in between us. So I think, you know, um, Facebook shouldn't be our form of, uh, communication with people. I don't believe, uh, even though I do some Facebooking myself, you know, you just gotta be careful with, uh, who you believe, what you believe, and if you got your own opinion, then you keep your own opinion to, you know, to yourself or, or voice it, but I don't think it should drive a wedge between the community and, and what, what the city council is doing, so that's where I agree with you, Tony.
Okay, I'm a little scared.
That's it, yeah, exactly.
Gotta watch out for lightning.
Yeah.
Mr. Taylor?
Wow, how do you follow all that?
I don't know, I don't know. Just bow down. Yeah, 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 yeah.
So, well, actually, since, since Tony brought it up, I, um, I'm nasty sergeant, really, but um, I, I agree, actually, and, and there's a lot of times people get on the radio, they'll say negative things, and, and I'm one of them, and I know Tony's been one of them, and and it's okay, we're public officials, to be called certain things, but actually we are the ones that get called for name-calling, but we're the ones being called names, and typically they're not true. I mean, you know that, I mean, uh, but, uh, but yet that happens anyway. And I do appreciate you, Mr. Burks, coming out of, uh, you know, Rapsody Out of Dinner to take a photo op. That was great for the parade, so I appreciate that being there. Um, but I think that I absolutely agree with what they're saying, that we need to move forward, and then, you know, a few small group of people are the ones really driving this wedge, and it's not factual based, it's not the truth. And, uh, you know, it's kind of disappointing, it really is, but, uh, I just wanted to say before I, I got sidetracked by Mr. Duffy there, but, uh, everybody have a safe holiday, happy Christmas, Merry New Year, and, uh.
We'll see you next year.
See you next year. Bye.
I wonder, could I address the council for five minutes on executive?
No, I, I, I have something yet to, uh, undergo of the order.
Okay.
Um, so it's been said, and it's a fact, that the election showed a seventy to thirty percent margin to go back to the mayor former government. But let's not forget the thirty percent. We were elected to represent one hundred percent of the citizens. So, the people that voted to keep it the way it is still have a voice, and they can't be shut out or ignored. So, um, we have talked a couple times here about the second meeting in December. Um, I would like to make a motion to cancel the second meeting in December on the twenty-third.
Second, yeah, I'll second.
Third, fourth.
Yeah.
Um, clerk, call the roll on that motion, please.
Um, Ms. Sonic?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Flower?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Coman?
Yes.
And I'll finish with, um, everyone have a safe holiday. And with that, um, do we need an executive session?
I'd like five minutes of your time on the executive session.
I believe so, since comments are over.
Um, Mr. President, do we have, uh, executive session for personnel issues?
Are you asking for one?
Um, yes, and I will ask for a, uh, executive session for personnel.
I'll second that.
Okay, um, I make a motion that we go into executive session under O R C one twenty-one point two-two for personnel on legal matters.
Inviting him.
And inviting in Mr. Robe, Chief Oliver, and Chief Barber.
Okay. Time is nine oh one. This is about any of the matters I'm accused. Um, I wouldn't be.
Yeah, this is.
No, nothing like that.
Okay, okay. Um, I guess. Clerk.
Okay, let's wait. Then we, uh, call our motion. Yeah, we have a motion on.
This is out.
Clerk, call the roll, please.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Flower?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yeah.
Mr. Coman?
Yes.